And ask for any public comment on any items not listed on the agenda. At this time seeing none, we'll move on to adoption of the Planning Commission minutes, which we have none of, so we'll move again into the first Planning Commission hearing, which is L-08-03, and the applicant is Senator Cal Properties. And it appears that this looks like a continuation to a date certain of February 9th, 2009. Any comments from staff?
No comments from staff.
Okay, great, then I'm open to a motion to move this forward to a date certain of February 9th, 2009.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. Move on next. Oh, you need a vote, sorry.
All right. Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
Commissioner Powell?
Aye.
Commissioner Le Joie?
Aye.
We'll continue to February 9th for CU-08-03.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next, we have another hearing, CU-08-07 and SP-08-15. And as this is a quasi-judicial hearing, I will read our information. Was this a?
It was already, this is a continuation, so you don't have to read it again.
Continuation, excellent, thank you. All right, then at this time, we'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair Powell and Planning Commissioners. This is a continuation of a file that was heard at the previous meeting, CU-08-07 and SP-08-15, for a new commercial building on Malala Avenue at the intersection of Buckner. At the end of the previous meeting, the Planning Commission directed staff to have the city's traffic consultant, John Replinger, and requested from the applicant that they bring their traffic consultant to come tonight to speak to specific questions the Planning Commission had regarding the left turn out of the coffee shop drive aisle onto Malala Avenue, any potential conflicts that may have with people across on Beverly Drive that may have. There's an offset at that area between the drive aisle and Beverly Drive. Secondly, there was a comment from the public regarding left turn lane out of Buckner onto Malala Avenue, and tonight we have, and I apologize, the gentleman's name from Lancaster.
Mike Arden.
Mike Arden is here for the applicant, and John Replinger is here, serving as the city's consultant transportation engineer. What I'd like to do is invite Mr. Arden to come up and kind of make a little presentation and background information on the transportation analysis letter he did for this project. And then we'll bring up Mr. Replinger, and the Planning Commission can choose to ask questions one at a time, and then potentially, we can bring both of them up to sit at the table, and you can ask questions to both of these gentlemen. What I'm available, if the Planning Commission would like, to make any amendments to the conditions of approval that could be added to tonight. There was an additional condition of approval that was added from the presentation two weeks ago, and that was requesting do not enter signs be placed. It's kind of implied, but it's always nice to put in the conditions of approval that maybe one or more will be placed on site, indicating that you can't turn into the drive aisle for the coffee shop from Malala Avenue.
And the other comment on that was the aisle itself, the drive-through aisle, put some sort of signage there that says it's drive-through only.
Mm-hmm.
And we talked about that.
Yeah.
So maybe it should just say appropriate signage.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I think that's actually what we left with.
Okay, good. The other question I had was regarding sewer and drainage. That was an issue that was brought up last week, that there was a potential of a drainage issue there, and I think we had asked to have Bob Coulson respond to that.
Yeah, that's a good question. Bob Coulson did look at it, and the applicant's plan for their stormwater management appears to meet our standards, and he is comfortable moving into the next stage where the fine detail analysis happens during engineering review.
Okay.
And that's really what he said in his staff report. It's really kind of a writing-style semantic issue.
Okay. Well, I just wanted it to be reviewed because it was an issue. Okay, great. Please come forward and introduce yourself and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Mike Arden with Lancaster Engineering, 321 Southwest Fourth, Suite 400, Portland, Oregon 97204. I did bring with me a document that I'd like to submit into the record, essentially filling a gap that I think was in the record. You guys, I believe, have the traffic analysis letter that I previously submitted, but from what I could find in my records, all of the versions I had produced said draft on them, and none of them contained an engineering seal. To make sure that you have an official copy in the record, I wanted to submit that.
Okay.
The text is unchanged.
And that'll be Exhibit 1 in our record tonight.
Who should I give that to?
Exhibit A, me.
Okay. Thank you, John. So, just to recap the traffic analysis letter, the proposed development consists of a general office building about 4,900 square feet and a coffee stand of 600 square feet. The impact of the trips associated with those uses would be about 59 trips entering during the morning peak hour and 53 trips exiting during that same morning peak hour. The site trips go down substantially during the evening peak hour because there isn't as much call for coffee in the evening peak hour, so you only get 13 trips entering and 18 trips exiting. The trips would be split between entering and exiting via Buckner and via the other site access driveway directly onto Malala Avenue. We did look at site distance at the driveway location, and also did a crash history for the intersections in that vicinity to determine whether there were any safety or operational problems that were evident at the existing location, and we did not find any. So that is a very brief recap of what's in the traffic analysis letter. I understand that in the previous hearing, there were some concerns expressed regarding two additional matters that I'd like to talk about briefly. First would be the fact that there are opposing left turns coming out of Beverly Drive. So Beverly Drive sort of makes a U-shaped loop. The northern end of that loop coincides roughly with the site access that is directly onto Malala Avenue. There's about a 35-foot offset between the two. Traffic that's heading down the hill, turning to the north, exiting from Beverly Drive, conflicts with traffic that is headed up the hill to the south exiting this site. Now, when we do see driveways that are offset in a direction that causes left turns to head into each other, that's sometimes a concern. In this case, the offset distance of about 35 feet is small enough that not only do the vehicles, or the drivers of the vehicles, see each other as they begin their turns, but we also have pretty low turning movement volumes, at least on the Buckner side. I did look at what's existing over there on the Buckner side and how many trips could be generated in and out of there, and because it's a loop road with two accesses and a limited number of homes, I believe there were 22, if I'm remembering correctly off the top of my head, I looked at the number of turns that I would expect to come out of Buckner, and what I was showing was approximately 13 to 14 trips exiting in the evening and about eight trips exiting in the morning. So we're not talking about a high level of traffic exiting from Buckner, and there is a high level of visibility there. There didn't seem to be a significant reason for concern regarding safety with those opposing left turns, given that proximity and the low volumes. The other item that was raised specifically was a question of how the Buckner Road intersection would operate, and this was raised by some residents that live on Buckner Road and are expressing that under existing conditions without this site, they already have a hard time turning from Buckner onto Malala Avenue, and that adding traffic to that approach would mean that we have long lines of cars and extremely long delays. I was concerned enough about that possibility that I ran an analysis, and it was based off of some data that the city maintains online regarding how much traffic is on Malala Avenue, as well as some historical count data that I had from other projects in the area. It gave me a pretty good idea of what the through traffic volumes were on Malala. Based on the characteristics of this site and the number of homes that are accessed off of Buckner, I could also determine pretty accurately how many trips we would expect on the side street. So I constructed an analysis for the morning and evening peak hours of what things would be like with this site. What I found is that the average queue lengths coming out of the site would be less than one vehicle during both the morning and the evening peak hours. The 95th percentile queue length, which is sort of the measure that in engineering we use to determine how much storage you need for cars, we like to cover it 95% of the time. The 95th percentile queue length was 1.6 vehicles during the AM peak hour, so just about two vehicles, and one vehicle during the evening peak hour. What that tells me is that while the delays may be high under existing conditions, we're not going to see significant queuing, so the delays aren't changing. The problem that local residents are having right now is that there are insufficient gaps in the through stream of traffic on Malala Avenue to make it so that they can turn easily out onto the street, not that they're in a line behind six other residents that are trying to get out of the site. And what we're showing here in the analysis is that's not going to change considerably. There will be more traffic, but there won't be significant queues that are occurring, so the delays are going to be similar. And with that, I think I've answered the questions that have been raised. At this point, certainly would be available to answer any further questions that you or other people from the public would have.
Okay, great.
I just have one, and maybe not so much the applicant's responsibility, but do you have any suggestions for breaking that gap or providing more gaps, other than lights, I'm sure would do that, but timing of lights, that the two?
Well, I certainly wouldn't want to dictate what the traffic characteristics are on Malala on the basis of this site. There are certainly other intersections along this stretch that have similar problems, though. Having a longer cycle length at a light can create more substantial gaps by forcing vehicles to platoon. In other words, on the red light, a queue of vehicles will accumulate
Right.
At the signal, and then they all go relatively together and leave larger gaps in between those platoons. So that is something that can help in some instances, but it has some drawbacks as well.
Consequences elsewhere, right.
Yeah, certainly. And at this point, I'm not seeing that that's necessary. I guess one thing that I didn't explicitly mention is that the average delay for exiting vehicles is within acceptable bounds per the City of Oregon City standards. We're seeing level of service E operation at the unsignalized intersection. Equates to just under 40 seconds of delay during the AM peak hour and about 37 during the PM on average for vehicles trying to turn onto Malala. Those delays would be lower on average for right-turning vehicles and a little higher for left-turning vehicles.
Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you very much, Mike. Mr. Replinger.
Good evening, gentlemen. John Replinger, city's traffic engineer. I think that Mr. Arden gave a good presentation of the content of his traffic analysis letter, and in fact, we had determined that the traffic analysis letter was the appropriate analysis to be performed for this particular development according to our traffic analysis, impact analysis guidelines. Mr. Arden gave, I think, a good summary of the conflicts, the conflict with Buckner Lane, delays on Buckner Lane. I think, as he explained, we do have more delays as we see traffic volume increases on our arterial's major collector system. It becomes increasingly difficult to make left turns from the minor street, and that will continue to occur at all locations as our community grows. As far as the offset between Beverly and the exit, again, it is a very minor offset. We would not accept, I think, an offset of this type with two public street intersections being created in a subdivision, but under these circumstances, I think it is acceptable because of the overall elimination of driveway locations from the site onto Malala and because it's a one-way facility. Furthermore, as Mike explained, with the offset, the two left-turning drivers are essentially looking right at each other and making that movement. So in terms of analyzing the site plan, I think we've talked about the amount of traffic that is generated by the facility. We have a lot of good queue storage on site. We have a very, really a very good condition for that, and by having the left, or the exit only from the coffee shop, we're eliminating any sort of conflicts there that could occur if we had both inbound and outbound at that location. So in overall, my analysis is that the applicant has done an acceptable job, and the system that is being offered to us for development of this site meets the city standards with regard to the safety and the adequacy of the system here. So I'm content with it, and therefore recommend no mitigation or other measures in relation to this development.
Okay. I have a question, John, and I know you just, you've answered it generally, but on the exit-only drive-through, and I don't know what the opportunity would be, but you've got a center lane, and you've got somebody exiting left off of Buckner, and then you've got somebody with, you know, within, you know, the same timeframe entering to the center lane from the exit going left. Are we going to see, I mean, that's a concern I have. I'm not, I'm less concerned about right and left off Buckner. I'm more concerned about left off Buckner and left out of the drive line at the same time, and that's where I, because you're going to be trying to rush out of there, and that's where I have a concern. Can you address that some?
So the left turn out of Buckner, you're anticipating those people who choose to make a two-stage left turn.
Potentially.
They turn into the center lane before moving over to the right.
Correct.
And those would be conflicting with?
The left turn out of the drive-through.
Well, those people are by definition further to the south.
True, but if you've turned, and sorry to interrupt, if you're turning left into the center lane, you're looking over your left, right-hand shoulder to see oncoming traffic, and you've got somebody pulling in directly in front of you in the left-hand lane, potentially. Now, I know this may never happen, but I'm just, that's where my concern is, that you have people exiting left out of the drive lane and people exiting left into, off of Buckner into the center lane at the same time.
Well, I think you've got sufficient separation there that I do not, that is one of the conflicts about which I am least worried.
Okay.
So I think that's a, you know, that is frankly quite acceptable.
Okay, that's, well, that's my, that was my question specifically about that length, and if, whether that was enough length to be able to manage that properly.
The distance, as I recall, is something around over 100 feet, 120 feet, and in fact, 140, Mike tells me. And in fact, when you execute a two-stage left turn, you are obligated to turn into that lane and stop until such time as you can move into the right lane. I realize that not everyone stops.
Let's see, I don't think anyone does, but that's all right, John.
So, yeah, there are several hundred traffic engineers, and maybe there's an odd police chief or two, but
Right.
Now, with a distance of 140 feet, the typical left-turning vehicle is, is conducting that turn from the stop on Buckner, from the stop at the coffee shop as well. You'd probably be entering that left turn lane at maybe 10 miles an hour. So with 140 feet of distance in front of you, you're going quite slowly. I would, like I say, Commissioner, I think that's one of the conflicts that I would be least concerned about.
Okay.
But I'm really pleased to have you observing and critiquing, you know, this kind of stuff. We do sometimes miss things.
Well, it's just, I've been, I've tried to get out of another exact situation further up Malala, and two times I have been very close doing exactly the same thing, and it's, it just, in my mind, I went, oh, I can see this might be a problem.
Right.
But granted, where I've done it was much less space, so I can accept that.
Okay.
I can understand that, but just wanted to get that
Yes.
From a, from a traffic perspective, it wasn't legal, 140 feet, that enough.
Did you come to a full stop?
I did not.
Ah, well.
I was not even aware of that. Was that on the driver's test?
Well, you're only required to get, what is it, 70% correct when you take the driver's test, so it's just.
And I think I probably hit that.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions of John, Commissioner Le Joie?
I just have one for staff. What would be the mechanism? So the only thing that, I mean, if streets are having a problem and we need to put a set of lights, that's one thing, that's, oh, you know, things happen, but out of private property where we want the left turn, so we're, let's say for talking purposes, we assume that we're going to allow that. If we find there's a problem, what's the mechanism to stop the left turn out of the drive-through?
Well, I can give, let John answer some of it, I can.
Well, for a safety concern, we do have the option of putting in a median barrier. I mean, that absolutely prevents left turns.
Okay, so that can happen, you know, a year from now, we just sort of monitor it and?
I mean, we're the operating, we are the operating authority for the street, you know? We can control it to the extent that we need to, to make it safe, and, you know, I'm glad that you and the council are going to be making the decisions about, you know, it's a tough decision because it is adversely affecting people. It's a big trade-off, and I'm glad that I can just keep to my little piece of giving you the advice about the traffic. But, you know, if we need to close some difficult, dangerous turns, we can do so.
So I guess that begs the question, is that something that we would want to put as a condition after a one-year review or something like that, to just review it, or is that?
What John was saying is we have the ability to go out
At any point.
And put an island.
But what's?
I mean, they put a barrier in the center turn lane.
But, and I'm not sure if this is your question, but what's, at what point do we do that? With three accidents, with no accident? I mean, how do you determine that, at what point?
Well, I think that, I think I would not anticipate this being the situation, although we would have to make a special case of that. If I thought we had a serious problem with regard to that, I'd be inclined to tell you we should not have this left turn, or specifically identify because of a known crash history, you know, various things that we might want to have a study. I don't think this is even close to requiring a condition for that. I think there are other places where we would, that would be a higher priority, so I think would be unnecessary, and as Christina said, we can go do this at some later date.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to follow up on a question that I'd raised last time, and it was, I think in response to some of the citizens questioning that there would only be an increase of 14 trips over the prior use of this site, based on 100 peak trips. So can you provide some of the logic to
Yes.
To describe what that increase of 14 means?
Well, it's, that's 14 new trips after excluding not only the prior use, but also excluding the pass-by trips that occur. And the coffee shop is heavily oriented to siphoning off traffic that is headed down Malala anyway. The way we have developed our code, I guess we, we were focusing on requiring an applicant to analyze a broader portion of the community, and that's why we set the standard, the difference between a traffic analysis letter and a transportation impact study is at the 25-new-trip level. Well, with the traffic analysis letter, we focus, we require the applicant to focus his analysis on the site, and in fact, the analysis does that. There are 14 new trips, which mean we don't have to go down to, you know, Beaver Creek Road or down to Division with our analysis. So it's the fact that there are these 14 new trips being added that will impact the more distant locations. We do have a concentration of, you know, 50 or 80 or 100 trips right in the immediate vicinity, and thus, the applicant does have to look at that, you know, as site driveways and those areas. So it's kind of a geographic focus.
So this new use would be a magnet for 14 new trips in addition to the existing pass-by traffic?
Essentially, that's a pretty fair, that's a pretty fair way of describing it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions this time? All right, John.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. I think we'll take some, yes, public comment, you've got some forms, please.
If anybody wants to do, I have the forms.
Oh, anyone like to speak?
Do you have? Okay, sure.
For the record, my name is Pam Kretschmer. I'm a resident of Oregon City and a current resident residing on Buckner Lane. One of the concerns that I have in terms of the traffic pattern that I don't think was addressed is, not only is there, again, it's Beverly Drive, but there's also another shorter street just up the way called Warner, and a lot of, right now, a lot of traffic comes into that left turn lane early. It shouldn't be there, but it does, and it comes across the intersection of Buckner Lane to make that next left onto Warner. So again, if traffic is going to be backing up and people are going to be making left-hand turns, and we're waiting for that two-stage left-hand turn, if cars are coming around to get in there early to make their quick left turn just a little further up the street to get into Warner, that's another, I know it's hard to explain. If you don't live in that area, again, it's difficult, but it happens quite frequently that cars come into that left turn lane too early. They should be waiting until after they cross the Buckner intersection, quickly get over, they have about a car length that seems to get over and make their left turn. Many of the drivers don't seem to feel that it's necessary to wait past the intersection, so they enter the two-stage left turn early and are blocking, again, our way to get out, and I don't think that that maybe has been addressed in the traffic analysis letter. Again, I'm not sure where those numbers are coming from, or since it wasn't a traffic impact study that was done apparently, where are those numbers coming from? How old is the study with the traffic patterns that are on Malala Avenue? Are those numbers coming from when that was a four-lane road, or now the additional traffic with the reduced two-lane? I don't know. Maybe it's recent data, but I'd be very interested to know where that data came from and how old it is, and if it's, if it really is looking at the current amount of traffic there. And again, I just want to go on record saying I think that this is a lovely proposed establishment with the exception of the drive-through component that I can see really hindering the traffic patterns through Oregon City. There are three main thoroughfares to get from the top of Oregon City down to the bottom of the hill, South End Road, Malala Avenue, and 213. Those are your options, and I see with the, this will decrease the options in the length of time and the availability of those that live in the hilltop area to get to the bottom of Oregon City. I just, you know, anyway. Mine concludes my comments, I guess. Appreciate your time. I appreciate the fact that you've asked for some additional attention to be brought to this. Maybe business won't be that good, and maybe traffic won't be impacted. That could be my only hope as a resident that lives in that area. I also wanted to go on record, because last week it was mentioned that with these mixed-use plannings, you know, that neighborhoods have to get used to this. I just think that if we're going to look at this as a city, we need to consider the impact of neighborhoods when we approve businesses. They shouldn't be juxtaposed to residential districts that are already residing there. In other words, I don't mind the business being there, the insurance company, the sit-down coffee shop component, but the drive-through that's going to impact traffic and our neighborhood and our quality of living in terms of running from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 at night, there's going to be a lot of increased traffic, lights coming up our street. I mean, it's pretty noisy already from where we live in the middle of the road to the end of the traffic, and I can just see that enhanced now. And I think when we look at mixed-use planning, it shouldn't be at odds with residential neighborhoods. It should be mixed-use businesses that don't impact our quality of life as residents. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Pam. All right. Actually, John, would you, could you address maybe a couple of those points? Actually, John, would you, could you address maybe a couple of those points? One, Warner, and was that included in the study? And then...
Could you point out where Warner, is it the next one up on the left?
It's above where it says "Subject Site," right on the, on the right, left-hand side. And then the other question was, how accurate or how current are those numbers?
Well, I don't think Warner was not analyzed because that's frankly too far from the site for us to require the applicant to do that analysis. Pam's observation about people getting in the left turn lane too early is, you know, unfortunate, and I don't have any good solutions for that. And as far as the dates on the traffic counts, Mike, did you have a...
Sure. Mike Dard has a...
Thanks, Mike.
Since we were not specifically required to do analysis at any intersections, we did not generate specific counts for this intersection. In fact, what I did is I looked through Oregon City's historical database and found through movement volumes for Malala Avenue, and they're recorded at various intervals along the length. The most recent data that I could find was from April 2004. Those numbers, I applied a growth factor to, to account for four years of growth, and then I compared the resulting numbers to actual counts that were conducted down the street at the intersection of Malala and Seventh and Division. And found that the inflated numbers, based on my analysis, were significantly higher than the numbers that were shown actually counted in the field this year. So, I do believe that the analysis is conservative in that respect where there was any uncertainty regarding the actual volumes.
Okay. Great. Any questions at this point? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. All right, any other comments from the public this time? If not, then I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it up to the commission for discussion. Anyone like to comment? Commissioner Dunn?
Well, I'll start off. I really like the, the applicant's building, the, the design, the layout for traffic, other than the drive-in and the stuff we're going to have to deal with eventually. But overall, it's a really good plan. I guess the only concern I would, I guess, address to the city is to, you know, just keep an eye on the traffic, and we, and we just need to follow through with that.
Okay. Anyone else comment?
I would agree with, with Commissioner Dunn. I, I think that, that, that the, the site is suitable in a, in a, in the, the location of that drive-through, I think, is, is, is a suitable location to, to have a drive-through. I think that there's going to be a minimal traffic impact, and I think that the traffic impacts have been addressed and analyzed by the traffic engineers, for me sufficiently. I think that, that, that the, the character of the area is going to be substantially the same. There's going to be a little increase in the amount of traffic that we're going to see there, but I think that, that I, I would, I would approve this conditional use.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll make a quick comment.
Commissioner Lajoie?
Yeah, since I was the one that was, that brought up the, originally, the left turn out of the drive-through, I'm satisfied with, with what I heard here, and especially given that we can continue to monitor it over time. So, if it becomes a problem, we can not have it be a left turn. There's lots of things we can do. So, from that standpoint, I'm satisfied with that, and I've already made my comments about, about the, the, the design. I just think it really works with what we're trying to do with, with mixed-use projects along this corridor. So, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this project.
And I guess, I guess my comments are along the same lines. It's not ideal for any of the turning situations, but for what we, you know, have intending to do for the region or for the, the area, I really like the, the design of the, of the buildings and of what we're going, you're going to do there as well. So, maybe not the best win-win situation, but, but a fair compromise.
Well, and, you know, my comment, I want to address Pam specifically on your, your comment about, you know, addressing the neighborhood's concerns and development as, after the neighborhoods are in. And there was many years of discussion as when we changed the code, or I changed the zoning along that street. And we, we, there's a reason that we didn't put drive-throughs there, and that, and this is exactly the reason. And, you know, we, we wanted to look at every single one as it came up, so that we could review it, just like we've done tonight. None of us wanted to cause problems for the neighborhood, none of us want to cause problems for the rest of citizens in town. So, just so you know, we do look very, very seriously at these things, and we look, we reviewed these a lot before we even put this code in, to make sure that we could have that. And there was a lot of discussion about, from people, they wanted drive-throughs on a main drag. And so, you know, we feel like we've, we're trying to, trying to fix it both ways, so. But just to everyone who is watching and for you, we are reviewing these things, and we review them all individually. So, we appreciate your comments. I, again, think it's a, a great project. I, I think we've done, the applicant's done due diligence here and coming back and giving us more information. I appreciate that very much. As for the drainage issue, which was another one that came up, I believe that the city has been notified that there's an issue there, and we'll make sure that that is handled when it gets down to the design phase, and we'll, we'll stay on top of that as well. So, at this time, I am open for a motion.
Commissioner Powell?
Ah, yes, I'm sorry.
Just want to, with the motion to add new conditional approval of 19, prior to certificate of occupancy, do not enter and drive aisle only signs shall be installed at the drive-through entrance at Malala Avenue per, per city engineer's requirements.
And appropriate signage, or how did, would...
If do not enter and drive aisle only signs.
Oh, thank you. You said that, and I didn't hear it. Thank you. Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use 08-07 and SP 08-15 with conditions, including the new condition 19.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dunn. And Pete, you call, roll, please.
Commissioner Lajoie? Aye. Commissioner Powell?
Aye.
Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in. We appreciate it, everybody's comments. All right, let's move on then to the next hearing. This is L-08-01. This is legislative hearing, applicant city of Oregon City, and these are amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. So, at this time, we'll turn this over to staff for, for your presentation.
We're tag teaming over here.
Okay.
In your packet, staff has prepared two memos. The first memo is a summary of what you are reviewing tonight, and tonight, we're requesting a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission to the City Commission for the proposed amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. These are, this is a legislative file that the Planning Commission has been reviewing for the last almost 11 months, and these are code amendments that deal with how development looks in Oregon City, how new development looks, and how the impacts from that new development are mitigated, the impacts to the city's street system, to the natural and built environment. So, primarily, these amendments are to Chapters 16 and 17 of the City Code, which are our land division code as well as our, our zoning code. We're also proposing some amendments to Chapter 12, which is our Public Streets and Sidewalks Chapter, and those amendments have to do with street trees and street standards. And we also have some other amendments to our new buildings section of the code. As I've said, we're proposing zone code, zoning code changes, but we're also proposing citywide zoning changes to certain areas of the city. And those are rezoning of areas that have been deemed feasible for redevelopment, and the Planning Commission has reviewed those in the last few weeks. We have had a number of requests during the legislative process to add properties into the rezoning, and some of these properties, some of these rezoning requests have made sense because they're compatible, obviously compatible with adjacent zoning, and can be easily redeveloped under existing standards and don't require any special analysis. And those two, there are two properties that I want to call your attention to that are already in the record. And the first property is 427 Warner Parrot Road. Owner is Herman Crisp. The request is from R10 to R3.5. The tax lot is 32E 7BA, tax lot 6400. The second property is 19245 Pease Road. Paul, the, Paul Bell is the owner. The request is from R10 to R8, and the tax lot is R2, oh, sorry, 32E 6CA, tax lot 1600. The most recent request that we have received is a, a request from Mr. Jason Ledley for the property at 19048 Pease Road to be rezoned from R8 to R35. That's Exhibit 3 of your packet. Staff is not recommending that this property be included for rezoning as part of L0801 at this time. Just as a side note, that property was already rezoned to R8 as part of the Roman Place subdivision. It is a single tax lot surrounded by single-family zoning, so it would be incompatible with the zoning around it, and should ideally be dealt with as a separate owner-initiated rezoning request rather than a legislative. Other exhibits to your packet this evening, we have code sections that have been revised to own, to correct grammatical errors only. And as we go forward to the City Commission, we will be making sure that we weed out any grammar errors or spelling mistakes, and I thank Commissioner Dunn for his diligence in looking at the code. Welcome, welcome everything that he's done and continues to do. I think every planning commission should have an English teacher.
Yeah, and he's proud of that former part.
I think you're proving once, once always.
Second exhibit is a draft memorandum that the staff had prepared for the Planning Commission to review, and this is the memo that the Planning Commission would be sending forward to the City Commission. And it outlines what the commission has been doing for the last 10 months. It talks about the process that we've been in with the work sessions and the public hearings that we've had to date, and it recommends approval of the zone changes. It also identifies some specific concerns that the Planning Commission has with respect to certain aspects of the code, and recommends that these issues be discussed at a work session in February 2009. And those specific items are the issues of tree regulation on private property, including heritage trees, commercial rezoning, and the potential for commercial rezoning in the South End Road area, in South End area in general, how the city should regulate temporary accessory structures such as fabric RV awnings on single-family homes, and also whether the city should amend the sign code at this time or in the future. And this is a discussion that the Planning Commission is recommending go forward with the City Commission in the new year, prior to adoption of these proposed code amendments. And in the memorandum that we have included as Exhibit 2, we go into a little more detail talking about those specific items, tree preservation, commercial rezoning, temporary accessory structures, and amendments to the sign code. And we're looking for any further input that the Planning Commission has. If you'd like to make revisions to that memorandum, you can make them tonight, you can make them after tonight. We will take those into account. So, we also included the rezoning request for Pease Road, which I just talked about, as an Exhibit 3, and we've also included Commissioner Lajoie's letter with respect to heritage trees as Exhibit 4.
Exhibit C, which you'll find on your dais, is a memo that we put, that will be incorporated in the final staff report, which provides findings for four titles of the Metro Functional Plan, Title 1, Title 4, Title 11, and Title 13. We, because we are part of the Metro Functional Plan, Metro advises that those were the applicable title sections we needed to provide findings for, for compliance, and we have done that, and we will be incorporating that in the final staff report that the City Commission sees. So, this will be just a page in the future staff report. And there was some question about the property that was recently purchased for a new city park on Glen Oak Road. It's in the employment area category of the Metro Functional Plan. There's employment, industrial and regional, least significant industrial lands, so it's kind of the third tier. And in discussions with Ray Vallone with Metro, we do not need to do a map amendment. Employment land map amendments are really relating to adding commercial properties over, or development over 60,000 square feet, where you really need to get into that map amendment. And so, just confirmed today with Mr. Vallone that we do not need to do that. So, we are in compliance with that park as is.
And the other two new exhibits that are on your desk are Exhibit A, which is a letter from Regional Planner Brian Harper detailing the compliance, substantial compliance of Title 13 Code. So, the Metro staff has looked over our new Natural Resource Overlay District, which would implement Title 13, and they've made some minor code change suggestions. They've also referenced which areas of the code we need to call out in our final memorandum to the City Commission, and as to how those other areas of the code and our city policies implement Title 13. Specifically, the Public Works Department is going through the process of revising our public work standards to look at green development standards, green streets. They're, they're called low-impact development standards. Part of what Title 13 does is require the removal of any barriers that encourage habitat-friendly development practices, and this is a series of practices that anybody can implement, depending on what kind of development they're, they're doing, whether it be the use of rain gardens, disconnecting downspouts, using pervious surfaces and tiles and drain fields to lessen the impact of stormwater discharges on the, on the stormwater and the natural system, and, and preserve habitat in an urban environment. So, Brian's letter details how the city can go about doing that. We're well on the way to substantial compliance with Title 13, with 1749, also with our tree protection code amendments for development review properties, where we allow flexibility and setbacks in order to preserve trees, and those sorts of things. So, with the tree protection ordinance that we have in place going forward with the amendments, 1749 Natural Resource Overlay District, as well as the low-impact development standards that the Public Works Department will be bringing forward to adoption by the City Commission in December, we will be in, in substantial compliance with Title 13, and we'll provide a revised memorandum in that regard. The final map that accompanies the Natural Resource Overlay District is under review right now. There are some areas that are slightly different, different habitat areas than the map that the city wants to adopt. Metro's map has about 900 acres of habitat on it, and the city's map, if adopted, would have about 1,400 acres of habitat on it in a contiguous system, because it includes all of the Title 3 Water Resource Overlay District as well. So, it brings in all of the buffer that's required for that, and that's why it's a larger area. So, once we get a, a final analysis from Metro on the map, we will take that to the City Commission with the accompanying code and have a complete packet.
So, while we're on this... So while we're on this, you're referring to this letter from Metro. It appears that many of these are just word changes and that type of thing, but there are a few things in here, and my question would be, will we get a chance to see how you respond to these prior to our meeting with the City Commission, or will we see it at the City Commission? For instance, 1749, or I'm sorry, 1749-180, nope, that's not it, that's one of them. 1749-190 suggests specifying a methodology to use in assessing functions and values or stating, you know, those kind of things. I mean, are those, is that something that we'll be able to participate in?
Staff was anticipating just making those changes in accordance with Metro's suggestion and taking it to the City Commission rather than bringing it back to Planning Commission, but it's at the Planning Commission's discretion if you would like to keep this item and make a recommendation at the next December.
No, I'm not, speaking personally, I'm not that concerned about it, but I'm just wondering, you know, I'd like to.
My feeling is that they're so minor, and we will implement them. Where the discretion of a ecologist or biologist is necessary rather than us trying to write in a particular standard, we will require that a biologist or an ecologist put together a report showing how a particular development meets a functional value in the code.
Great.
That's a specific thing that is, we will do.
And that would be my concern.
Yeah, it was a concern of mine, and it's very difficult to write code to that since each development property is different. You need an expert to determine which functional value you are going to impact or improve, and those functional values are in the code.
So what they've written and requested, and by reading it, it appears that it's all within the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here. It doesn't appear that there's anything that's outside of what we have discussed, you know, as a commission to forward this on. So I'm not concerned about that, and I think you should be able to respond to most of it.
We should have the final version of the map and the code by the time you meet with the City Commission.
Yeah.
So that, if that's your concern, you'll have that by that.
Yeah, that'd be great. If anything, if there's anything that can be changed, we'll still have the opportunity. I don't expect there will be, but just make sure, I want to make sure that it's in the spirit of our discussion as we went through all this. That's it for me on that. Thank you.
And then I also have a 1740 Historic Overlay comment.
Okay.
Mr. Stein nicely emailed me, and I find it ironic that the Historic Preservation Planner did not, forgot to put 1740 in the omnibus package and memo. It is in the record. The two sections of the historic overlay zone that were presented at the August meeting involved clearly delineating the correct Barlow Road location, the 1993 Management Plan location, not the 1988, and the second was the demolition denial standard. So that is in the record today. You don't have to worry about your motions. When we get to the City Commission, we'll just make sure it gets in their packet, but it is already in the record when you make your motion tonight.
Does that respond? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
To, the final item in your memorandum is a proposed motion for adoption.
What is, what's the long one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that a kind of a detail of the?
Thank you, I skipped that. Exhibit B is a compliant, a Title 13 Compliance Analysis Matrix that Metro staff did of our entire code and policies in 2006. And you'll notice they've put sections of code in there, and whether each section of code that we have in our existing code is a, promotes or impedes implementation of Title 13. And in the main, the existing code already promoted it with a few exceptions that have to do with public works, specific public work standards that are under review right now. For example, there was a specification drawing for a street which required sidewalks on both sides of the street for a local street section, and that could be an option under a green street standard. So that would be something that we'd bring forward as a revision with the new green street standards that Public Works is working on. The other items where Metro has written recommendations in are all being implemented under the code amendments. And for example, flexibility in setbacks, density transfers, and use of vegetative plana strips as drainage swales, and various other recommendations. They are all either permissible under the code amendments or specific standards that would be adopted by the Engineering Division and Public Works Division. What we expect to do with this matrix is just put a second column in here showing which code items are implementing these specific recommendations, and that would be going forward to the City Commission as an exhibit.
Good idea.
So I think that takes care of all the exhibits that we've got in the record to date, and the proposed motion that we've written down, which may be modified as you see fit, recommends adoption to the City Commission of L-0801. General code updates to Chapters 2, 12, 15, 16, and 17 of the Oregon City Municipal Code, comprehensive plan map amendments, and zone changes, and further recommends for discussion with the City Commission at a work session in February 2009, the specific issues of tree regulation, commercial rezoning in the South End area, temporary accessory structures, and amendments to the sign code prior to final adoption of the proposed code amendments.
Any comments, staff at this point? I want to call for any citizen comments at this point, so anyone would like to come forward, please just fill out a form and be happy to introduce yourself, and city residents, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Paul Edgar. I'm the Land Use Chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. I look down here, and one of the items here is constrained streets. And they list a pavement where the pavement is between 12 and, or 20 and 32 feet, and how it might restrict emergency vehicles and just the overall land use and planning. Well, Kanema has paved streets that are 12 feet. They're in a 60-foot wide right-of-way. But obviously, if you think the minimum is 20 feet, and we've got 12, we've got some real problems. Because if in fact, that means that that might restrain development in Kanema, it will maybe, and it's something that has to be thought out. It may mean that this new house like this being built right up by the cemetery, this four stories, by this standard would be virtually mandated to have fire. Sprinklers on it, but it was never, never done. But when we look at Kanema as far as the safety is concerned, and I'm out there in the street virtually every day with my dogs walking, and it's really dangerous, but we don't have curbs, and I've been pushing for a green streets implementation, but we might need a classification just to spell out Kanema, a historic district like this, because we don't want the streets modified. We don't want them wider. We've got areas where we have parking on the streets, and maybe we should not have any with how narrow they are. It really requires some serious looking at it, and I don't know that we're really ready to approve all of this right now until you guys take a good, serious look at this particular part of Oregon City, the only nationally-registered historic district in all of Clackamas County, and it should be spelled out and protected in the thinking and how it reflects with this code. Also, recently, we've been talking about some of the traffic conditions going in and around, including on South End Road. I know, talking with the county traffic guy, that there's 10,000 trips per day on South End Road coming down from up at Warner Mill going down to, let's say, Second and Tumwater, coming into High Street. When we look at any future considerations that might add to that traffic problem that's there, and creating the queues, the level of service conditions that are already evident, we have a lot of cars that bypass, they turn, they do the little curly queue onto Fifth Avenue, circle and weave right down through Kanema to get down to McLaughlin all the time because they, I can't wait down at Second and Tumwater in the AM peak, and even in the evening peaks, you see people coming from Canby and those ways circling through our area. So we've got a real problem there, and it is a weight-restricted road, so you start talking about putting commercial rezoning out on South End, and you've already got a restricted road that bans all trucks at certain weights. That's really inconsistent. We should also take a look at the, I don't know if this has all gone on, what's happened, but the rezoning of the two houses on Second and Tumwater effectively across the street from the museum that the city owns. I saw them in a previous review of this code, and they were to be rezoned away from their residential zoning. I know that they were purchased back a while back by the Urban Renewal District, and they were, to a degree, the understanding was no one really talked about it, but it's part of the TRAM plan that is being advanced through the mayor and Lurie. And we need to know what that really is before any of these houses can be rezoned from a residential use, as they are right now in the McLaughlin District. I don't, it's like, we have a commercial district along McLaughlin in Kanema, but when you start rezoning residential across like this, we've got to have a lot of things on top of the table where everybody has a full view of it. And right now, I think that there's some of this rezoning is being slipped in. I just, we need to have, what is the purpose? What are we doing? Is there a business plan associated with those buildings on Second and Tumwater, those two houses there? That should be known by everyone because it also affects traffic patterns and everything else that's being put there. It just can't be swept under the carpet. I'm really concerned also about Title 13 in Kanema. We would like to see Kanema as the first green streets implementation in all of Oregon City. I recently went through two Nature in the Neighborhood grant-writing classes at Metro, spent time talking to them, and they felt that Kanema was the exact example of a district in an area where we should be implementing that type of stuff. They encouraged me to go ahead and do some grant writing. I talked to the mayor about it because I got a, pretty well, a flat turn-down by Nancy Kreshauer saying that they had other priorities. So I personally went to the mayor and I asked her, I said, "This is a way that we can bond our neighborhood together, where we can start cleaning out the ivy and the blackberries and start really cleaning up Kanema." We've got 60-foot wide platted right-of-ways with only 12 to 20 feet of asphalt, so it's, all the rest of it is mostly weeds, and it's really not beautiful. It's the actual, the opposite of it. And so we need your help. I need your help because the mayor said, "If we can get some of the bodies, people like you guys saying, 'Hey, this is a good idea, where we should be trying to do things like that,' then it will have traction." So I need to come to you guys and say, "Okay." Not only have I come to you in the past to talk about safety in our streets. The police, state police just tracked somebody going through McLaughlin from Canby in the AM rush hour, 9 o'clock in the morning, at 70 miles an hour. This is not happening irregularly. It happens, the average speed coming from, coming over the bluff into Kanema is around 50 to 60 miles an hour down into the commercial district. And somebody says, "Well, why can't you get commercial redevelopment down there?" You can't. Cars are going so fast. John's Auto Repairers had over a half a dozen customers rented trying to turn left just to have their car serviced. We had a paper boy killed down on the Canby end of South End Road many years back, just trying to deliver papers through Kanema. You can't walk across the streets. So we're asking again for you to come back and look at this because it's, the problem's not going away, it's just getting worse. But with your help and somebody that actually feels like that that part of Oregon City, this national historic district deserves to be better. I think we can do better, but we need your help to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, Christina?
I can comment on some, Mr. Edgar.
Please.
12.04230 with Mr. Edgar brings up for constrained street. It's really more of a development standard for new development. So the hardest part about Kanema is this is an existing platted neighborhood, and a lot of solutions for Kanema are going to come out of a grant program or working with Public Works. The solutions most likely are not going to come out of the development code. And so for, while we've moved the constrained streets to Title, I mean, to Chapter 12, for the most part, it's really only going to be used for land use applications for new streets or for land use applications that can require dedication. Everything in Kanema except for the properties right along McLaughlin are single-family residential on existing lots of records, so we're not going to get any new street improvements through the single-family house review process. Regarding Second and Tumwater, I just want to let Mr. Edgar know, those are not part of this approval process.
They're not.
Yep.
I saw them listed before.
You may have seen the property on Center Street that was, it's on top of the bluff.
Above, yeah.
Yeah, above where the Public Works operations.
No, these are the two houses that were bought by Oregon City Urban Renewal on Second and Tumwater, right across from this, what is this, still, barn, stillhouse. Those were on one of the maps, and they were shown to be rezoned to a, to a commercial or.
If anything was rezoned, it's for institutional. The zoning, the cleanup zoning we've been doing is for properties that are owned by the city that have a development zone, like commercial or residential.
These are residential houses.
Right, those were rezoned to institutional.
Or to institutional.
Yeah, and so, but let me double-check, I don't believe the Tumwater properties are part of it.
No.
The Public Works site that's up on top of the operations yard.
No, I'm not talking about that.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the two houses.
Right, those were not part, they're not part of this process.
But they were, they were identified to be zoned as institutional then, but I saw them identified specifically on one of your maps.
Okay, I can, I'll verify when we're done.
Yeah, we haven't seen that. So, you know, we've been through this, and that was not one of our zoning changes.
I don't remember seeing.
I saw it on one of the.
Well, we'll review that.
Yeah, I'll verify with you tonight. And then back to Title 13, there's a lot of aspects of Title 13. There's the regulatory Title 13, which we're working on right now regards to habitat protection, and then there's also kind of the carrot part of Title 13 that Metro's doing, and they have these enhancement grants. And, you know, in regards to tonight, we're really working on the regulatory approval, but having some more information on how Oregon City can take advantage of the Nature in the Neighborhoods grant program, we can get back to you on that, regards to that, but that's really outside the land use process.
Sure, well, but to the point, I think. Well, but to the point, I think it's important that we review those things, and I think it's important that we look at the, I mean, I look at the infill, and I understand what you said about not being able to get roads increased in size with the subdivision review, or with the single home review. But I think that's something that we have to be considered, we have to think about with infill development. Even in older parts in McLaughlin District, there's some very small roads. We've had this discussion many times in the past. If even the fire department said, "Well, then, you know, we can't get trucks in there to turn around, so we're going to have to sprinkle them," which is fine. I mean, that's something we need to think about, but that needs to be reviewed. And I assume it is reviewed if you're in a single-family infill. That's reviewed by the fire department, is it not?
In the building code.
In the building code?
Yeah, through the building code.
So, if there's a 12-foot, if there's a 12-foot road not accessible by fire equipment, then they would sprinkle it?
Yeah, there's all, and I'm not the expert on this, but we can't require sprinkling, but often it becomes the suggestion, and we accept it as the alternative.
We can't require sprinkling?
We can't, but the state statute, we can't require sprinkling, but we can accept it as an alternative.
If it's reviewed.
If it's presented to the city.
So if the, okay. Well, we can have this discussion some other time. I don't want to hold up. But I just, I'd like to talk a little bit more about that some point, about when, you know, if it's an unsafe situation, and the building code requires it, or, you know, building inspector requires it, is that something, we can't, we can't require that?
This would be a perfect item for a work session, because there's a lot of interesting nuances between building code and state statute for fire sprinklers. I know Commissioner LeJois is shaking his head. So if you want, when we get into the year, we can easily make that a work session, and we can prepare a little memo and kind of spring it down.
I would.
Because there's these infill projects that are not related to a land use approval, they fall through the cracks a little bit, in the sense of, what do we get from the city for this development, you know? And Kanema's just an example, in the sense that they have a lot of lots of record compared to the development, and they have the skinny streets, and they're on the hillside. I mean, they're just the perfect example of that. Whereas McLaughlin has some infill, but it's, you know, it's 80% developed, and they have the 20% infill. Right, right.
Well, and the concern, the thing, and I think that's a good idea. I think we need to talk about it, because the voters have said that annexation is not in the cards. So that means infill. And we need to talk more about infill, and we need to talk about rezoning. And I think this is going to go hand in hand, and I think that's a good discussion that we need to have as a body, and so we understand what we can and can't do.
Right. Yeah, and a lot of, a lot of this comes, these non-land use issues are always the sticky wicket. How do you help pay, how do you create matching grant fund money for Kanema to be able to do some street improvements in their right-of-way?
Right.
Outside the land use process? How do you get an STA and like a McLaughlin Boulevard plan for that section of Kanema? It's all discussion of where is the funding coming from, because it's not land use approval-based.
Right. And, well, and that's, it's a bigger issue. You're right. I mean, we have to, we need to look at that in a transportation advisory, people need to look at that as McLaughlin and, you know, so there's a lot of people who need all that discussion.
From the previous conversation we had, regards to the, we're now calling it the Transportation Summit for the Planning Commission and City Commission and invited neighborhood associations, anybody else? We're looking at doing that in the spring, probably March or April, when we are going to be reviewing our revisions to the STC. So it is on our radar, and we'd like to have a nice work session with everybody to go through all these kind of, some land use primers about what we can get in level service and some of that, but then just also what about issues that are not land use-related, and how should we address them?
Yeah, well, I think that's real important, especially if we're talking about commercial in South End, because, as Mr. Edgar said, I mean, there are certain ways out of this town, and we're going to have to really be sensitive to commercial deliveries and vehicles if, in fact, that's something we want to review. And that's something we never talked about in the first time we discussed this, because it just never went very far. But in this future discussion, I think that's something we definitely have to consider. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Like to speak? All right. Back to us, I guess, huh? So, we have a proposed motion that we can review, or we can change, if you would like to do that, or further discussion at this time. Anyone like to jump in here? Nobody wants to say it.
I don't have anything to add to this, so I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay.
So, I don't know what the other commissioners do as well.
Make a motion.
Make a motion. Okay. I'll make a motion then.
All right. Excellent.
I'd like to make a motion recommending adoption to the City Commission of L-0801, general code updates to Chapters 2, 12, 15, 16, and 17 of the Oregon City Municipal Code, the comprehensive plan map amendments and zone changes, and that there'll be further recommending for discussion with the City Commission at a work session in February of 2009, the specific issues of tree regulation, commercial zoning in the South End area, temporary accessory structures, and amendments to the signed code prior to final adoption of the proposed code amendments.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Pete?
Sheriff Powell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner LeJois?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
And Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I would like to say that I really appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this, from this body, as well as staff, who's done an excellent job, as well as all the citizens that came forward and made comment. It's been a long time coming. This is the culmination of a lot of work, not only this last year, but the prior three or four years with this comprehensive plan, and finally putting it into code so we can move forward. And I think it's going to be a very positive thing. So I'm looking very forward to it, and looking forward to the discussion with the City Commission in February. That's, I think, where we can have some further good discussion. So, anything else for the commission?
No, there's nothing further on the agenda. Just from staff's perspective, thank you for your hard work, and thanks to the public and everybody who commented on this process.
Well, thank you. Do we have a, we have a meeting next week?
We do. Next Monday, December 15th, will be a brief meeting. Tony Cockle, the planner on the Cove project, will be making the staff report and formal presentation, and will also be opening the record up for public comment. ODOT has requested a continuance, and the continuance of the hearing will go to the second meeting in January. And that would be January, I don't have a 2009 calendar, I think it's the 26th. But what the planning commissioners have packets to pick up tonight with all the information on the Cove, and especially in large format, so you can get your big desks spread open, and you can open it all up. And that's it, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Then if that is it, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good on you, Mr. Stein.